Okay. Can you hear us, Alicia?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good.
Good.
Okay.
It's something.
Let me call the town of Washington zoning board of appeals meeting for December 19th, 2023 to order. Tonight, there's really five orders of business. There's approval of the minutes from the November 21st meeting. The Cromer area variance, nobody provided any additional data for that area variance. So there has to be a motion to continue the public hearing till January. The Yard Guard area variance for a swimming pool, which is, says it's continued on 610 Stanford Road. The Blakely Lynch area variance for the ground mounted solar panel, which was continued from the October meeting on 134 Stanford Road. And a new one, the Paulman Key area variance for garden shed at 631 Shunt Pike. If I mispronounce your name, I apologize.
We'll give you a quick lesson on that. Podman Itsky.
Okay, okay. Is anybody here to represent Yard Guard?
I'll need a word from Mackie Buxtonwell and representing Daniel.
Oh, okay.
Am I presenting now?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay. Wait a minute, sit down. It's okay. Okay, I do have the minutes from November meeting. Any changes, alterations, corrections by anybody?
No, nothing.
No, nothing.
With that, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it. Motion by Frank, seconded by the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, I need a motion on the Cromer.
Yep. Since we didn't have any new submissions, I make a motion to continue the public hearing to the January 16th, 2024 DVA meeting.
Second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried unanimously. Okay.
You're up.
Now I'm up. Would you prefer I sit or stand? But, okay, I do have boards. I don't, I can get them after.
Oh, exhibits.
I don't.
Okay.
Mr. Yadgar is traveling, so he just wanted to let you know that he's sorry he couldn't make it here, but due to work, traveling. But this matter is of utmost importance to him. It's he and his wife Rachel and their two little girls. He applied for a variance back in September of 2022. And the variance was granted by the town and a permit was issued. And then there was, I could go into the history of the case, but basically at this point, there was a large hole in the ground. What he is asking for in this most recent application are three variances. There's two very small. One very small rear yard variance of 35 feet. That is rear yard. One is for a very small side yard variance of 9.2 feet. And one, which is a lot coverage variance. It's a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Where swimming pools are allowed. This is for a swimming pool. But the additional 525 square feet would increase the lot coverage by seven tenths of a percent. These requests are not unreasonable. The pool is flat, flush to the ground, very little noise. We submitted the pump informations, the quietest pump on the market, and the variance is not upwards or outwards. We are in agreement with the most recent determination by Mr. Finley from December 15th of 2023. If the board wants me to, I could go through a history of this application. I know it's.
I don't think we necessarily need history, but hell, probably needs to see what you're proposing in terms of where the pool is located and the distances.
You can bring up the boards.
Yeah, because I am, he's new to the board, so.
Have the survey. I don't know if you need to see that or you just wanted to see the proposed pool. The survey just shows where our client's property is. The patio is right here. The, you can see that this is the proposed pool of right here in relation to the patio. This is where the equipment would go up against the house. The house is right here. Post and rail, everybody see, post and rail fence is here. Post and rail door over here, privacy fence, stone retaining wall, filter pad, buried propane tank, and the patio was right here. Originally, it was for 720 square feet, but they've reduced it to 525 square feet.
What's the, Alex, showing where the road is located?
The main road, is that opposite side of the house to where the pool is?
Stanford Road is right here. The pool would be. Does that work?
Yeah.
So the pool would be right here.
You mentioned a privacy fence. What type of privacy fence is? Is it wood, vinyl, you know?
I just have to look at the application. I don't recall.
Okay.
Probably wouldn't. Views from different areas. This is a view from the roof showing the density of the trees at the property line. This is from the side of the property facing the house with 15 feet of property behind this image. Showing both the existing house and the patio are closer than the pool. This is the view from the roof showing overall placement in the backyard in relation to the patio. And this is the view from the back of the property facing the neighbor. Showing an increasing of 88 feet from the pool and property line and this density of the trees in the summer floor here. This is from the side of the property facing the pool with 10 feet of property behind this image. This is a view from walking out from the back door of the house. And this is the opposite view looking at the backyard where the swimming pool is. With about 15 feet of property behind this image. I just want to point out too that there are, just in the immediate vicinity, other pools that are much, that are closer. There's one right here in this lot. This is ours right here. You can see that one's closer. That's one right here. So ours is further in distance. This is Stanford Road and Shunt Pike Road. And we, I don't know if you could see it, but there are nine pools in blue that are within this vicinity. And four, the green represents tennis courts with similar area in size. So in terms of the rest of the neighborhood, other people have pools. I don't know if they have variances or not, but these are all within the immediate vicinity. Just to show you the type of work that this pool company does, this is work that they had done in another property. That's sort of similar to what it would look like. I think this is when they were building it. This is what it is. Those are all my boards. I don't know if you have any questions about the boards or if you want me to go through the back there.
Those are pictures of what the pool will look like?
This is, yeah, this is, this is the same pool company with a similar type pool. I'm going to move any of them around.
Go back to the first one you were going to put up. No, no, the one on the floor.
This one?
No, no.
This one?
The back one.
Oh, survey?
The survey.
Survey, yeah.
So you've got Stanford Road to the left up there, right?
Yes.
Okay, and the pool equipment would be situated where?
It's shown best on this one right here. Up against the house.
Okay. And then the backyard is the low, I want to say the lower right there.
Yep.
And the side yard is going up to the top with your arrow. On the one you got.
Yep, the side yard.
Yes, this is, the variance is 9.2 in the side. Yep, that's this one. And then this is the 35.
Oh, the 35 is that one there you're pointing to?
Yeah, that's the 35 variance. This is the 9.2.
And then it's, you only need 9.2 for the, that one?
Yes.
Good.
Now, pool equipment, I think that's right next to existing HVAC equipment, isn't it? That white square, I think that's existing HVAC equipment.
I don't see what's there. I have to get back to them.
Yeah, okay. Hope you got your phone.
Yes, I am.
Katie, 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 any?
No, I don't have any questions.
No, I have no questions.
Okay. Well, we do have, you did have the question on the privacy fence. What was it?
Oh, what was it made of? Wood or vinyl?
I just have to look at the application because I deserve that.
Absolutely. You see it's going to be six feet high, according to the map. Don't knock yourself out. I think it's, I'd say it's going to be wood or vinyl with the privacy fence.
I might need to get back to you while we're here. I can, I could stay and search.
Sure, okay. We don't have any more questions.
No, I take a motion to open the public hearing.
Go your second.
Second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, public.
Do you want me to go back to?
I'll bring a chair up.
Evening, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Alan Rapley. I represent the Cornell's. Can I just take a look at the application, John, before? I think this is the application right here. May I just?
I don't know. Is it that the application, though?
I don't know. Let me see how organized I am.
Sorry, I'm grabbing yours, too.
No. I'll give it to you if I have one.
You can get your copy. I want to have it.
Yeah, if you have it, let me see.
Hold on, hold on. I think I, I got mine right here, Alan, if you want.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, Frank, I'm looking at this about one topic. Yeah.
We can make a copy.
No, no, it was emailed from you. Maybe Katie. Oh, thank you. So, thanks for your time. We, this is a little bit of an ongoing application, so. I think it's helpful to divide the app, you know, the variances that we're seeking. So the first would be the coverage issue. And James, Mr. Finley has made a number of determinations. I think there's still an open issue that hasn't been decided that I've asked him to determine. The section of law, and I know you guys are familiar with the 25% rule, because it's often a topic for this board. The, the date in question for the 25% rule, or 391.7, is 1971. And if you have the time, suggest you do. You take a look at James's determinations. One of the things we've asked him to do, and we copied the zoning board on a letter yesterday, is to determine what is the size in 1971, because that's the ultimate measuring stick. That's what you go off of. James has determined, and we pretty much agree with him with one exception, that there's presently 9,050 square feet on site. The, the coverage at its best could not exceed 7,759 square feet. The problem is that none of us have what the measurement was in 1971. And that's the relevant date in the code. I think it's May of 1971. In fact, May 13th, 1971. So yesterday, we, we sent to James a group of aerials, which showed that as of 1980, the house is a certain size. And after 1980, it was doubled. It's no mystery to anybody here, anybody in the crowd as well, that our town records are not great. And everybody's sort of stuck with that. The problem is even without the town records, when you take the aerials, which we got from parcel access, the 1971 threshold measurement is a lot lower than 9050. It's considerably lower. So I, I would suggest that the zoning board, it would make a lot of sense to not go forward till you have facts as to what the threshold measurement was in 1971. Because that's the date that controls. James's recent letter indicates that, it's a little bit of a change of course, but he has a difficult job with an application like this. He, in his prior letter, he said it's a violation, and it's not eligible for a building permit. In the more recent letter, he said that from what he can tell, in 1987, everything that was there is there now. 1987 is not a relevant date to anything. It's 1971 that controls. So that's the first issue. The second issue is, and again, I know this board is familiar with it, 391.7, you frequently see. I've seen it. I've seen it before this board. I've practiced before this board on that application. I have another one coming up. You typically see, John would know best, he's been here the longest, alterations. You don't see entirely new structures. This is an entirely new structure. And James confirmed that as well, that this is not an enlargement or an extension or an alteration. It's an entirely new structure. The 25% rule doesn't allow entirely new structures. It doesn't permit them at all. To confirm that, if you look at section 392.5, it talks about non-conforming lots. 391.7 is, is a tough law. It's, it's difficult at times to understand. But 392.5 is not. And 392.5 towards the end talks about non-conforming lots. There's no dispute this is a non-conforming lot. And what it says in the last sentence is that the ZBA can vary setback requirements. It doesn't talk about coverage requirements. And so what I'm suggesting to you is, when you read those two laws together, you can vary alterations or modifications to existing structures. You cannot vary to permit entirely new structures. This is an entirely new structure. That's one of the reasons, and James deferred on this question, that this is really a use variance question, masquerading as an area variance. That, Lee has pointed out, there are pools in the area. There's no question there's pools in the area. None of those pools are the beneficiaries of variances. And none of those pools are the beneficiaries of variances that allowed an entirely new structure on a non-conforming lot that was already in excess of allowable coverage. And that's really the rub of the issue. So tearing it down, the issue of, of coverage, look, it's the heart of the issue, as I've talked about. This other stuff, you know, you, you see it, you see it frequently, setbacks and things like that. I'm not suggesting it's not meaningful. But ultimately, the law doesn't permit you to add a new structure. That's what's happening. And I would ask you to take a close look at those laws and you reflect on your history here. Have you ever had someone come in who's already over coverage by 1,500 square feet in a best case scenario? We would submit that the 1971 structure has already been more than doubled. So the coverage is at least 100% more than is allowed. But the, the request is really for you to grant the structure that's not even permitted. And it's not an extension of something. It's not a, a change. I saw some folks with Steve Hackbart, they were making a modification, were adding a room. That's really what the 25% rule is talking about. It doesn't talk about entirely new structures, and James confirmed that. As to the issue of area variances, because this is not an area variance, it's a use variance. And I want to talk about pools for a second. Again, I did a little bit of my own homework. There's pools all over the town of Washington. There are not pools that were added to a lot that's in excess of coverage. There's not a single one, to my knowledge. And that's the issue. It's not enough to just say, well, there's pools around. The gentleman, when he bought the lot, well knew what he was buying. We have several, many non-conforming lots in the town. This is not unique. So this is old. I gave this to you folks in February, but it kind of still applies. So I brought more copies again, because it really deals with the area variance questions. Lee, I can give you a copy. This was submitted back in February when you were first here. You may already have it, but you're welcome to that. So if you don't mind, I even wrote that the night I gave it to Kristen. So here's a few copies. John, there's one.
What's the date of that, Alan?
Yes, Frank, is, um,
I may have it already.
February 16th, 2023. I was like, I think it was the first time I, I appeared. Does everybody have it? If you have it, I don't need it.
I think.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I'll just grab one. I'm sure.
Absolutely. Thank you. You have it, Frank?
No, you made it. Yeah, I will fix it if you've got an extra one.
Yeah, I made a bunch of copies.
Yeah?
Yeah, sure.
Like so?
Yeah, you got it.
Okay.
So I think I did. Kyle, did I give you my original? It doesn't matter. You can keep it, but I'm just making sure. Yeah, no, there's one we call, I gave it to John. It's fine. I also gave this at the time. It wasn't attached, but I'm going to get, I have three copies of it. This is the letter from Candy Anderson, a broker, who indicated that the pool being this close to the Cornell boundary would impair its value significantly. I'll put two copies of this on the table. This was again back in, this was actually in January, and I gave it to you in February. Lita, that's a copy of it. And then I'd like to give you, and then we'll talk about it, is Mr. Cornell prepared, Mr. and Mrs. Cornell prepared. The good news is that, one of the bright sides of this present application is the pool got smaller. And because it got smaller, it fits a lot better in another spot. Sure, you can have that, too. Got several of them. Here's another one of those. John?
Where does it fit better, in the backyard?
There you go. No, no, right in the backyard. And I'll get back to this when we summarize, but because it got smaller, and this, this picture shows, this is the backyard of the property. This is if you're standing on Hitchcock land, which is where Jim was. You take a photo of the house. These are the Cornells right here. As the board knows, they're very close to the boundary. This is where it's proposed to be placed. This is where it can be placed, and which is particularly easier because it got smaller. It doesn't really impact the homeowner, but it does impact the neighbor being moved away. I'm not sure you can put it anywhere because of the coverage problem. But if it could be put somewhere, that would be a place that's an alternative location. It's much, it's a much better location that the property owner might say, well, jeez, I don't want to put it there. I've heard members of this board ask many times, is there another place you can put it? It's a fair question. There's clearly another place it can be placed. As you go through the area variance standards, and that's in this letter, I just want to point out, and you may all be familiar, it's been many months since we were together. Number one, this, this, the issue here was self-created, completely self-created. The emails that have the taxes exhibit one show that prior to the closing, Mr. Yadgar had reached out to Mr. Cornell. Mr. Cornell indicated he wouldn't like a pool there. The gentleman proceeded to closing anyway. Some meetings ago, I, I think I heard someone describe it as, you know, the Cornell's were upset that they didn't get something. That's not the case. The Cornell's just want the law even-handedly applied. They applied for a variance. They were denied. They've been described by Mr. Mackey as the litigant neighbor. That's not a way to refer to someone in my book. They did not sue the board because they didn't get their variance. They abided the board's determination.
I don't, I don't think they were denied. I think they withdrew that one application.
I think they knew it wasn't going to go well, Frank. So, and they withdrew it, and that was that. But it's not them being upset with that. They simply want the law applied even-handedly. This is very impactful on them for the reasons I've already described. But it was entirely self-created. The gentleman could have just walked away. I'm, I'm walking into a, a very difficult lot with a number of constraints, but I'm going to do it anyway because my kids want a pool. That's essentially what he's saying. Secondly, the variances are significant in the aggregate when you think of it. There's multiple variances on the side yard. There's a variance on the rear yard. There's a coverage variance, a significant coverage variance. It's hard to think of what variances they aren't asking for. So if you look at each one of them in the singular, you might say they're not significant. When you look at them in the aggregate, they're very significant. Or substantial. Again, this will be very impactful upon their neighbor. Light, noise, things they don't suffer now. Things they would like not to suffer in the future. That's one of the reasons that they tried very hard to give an alternative location. That there are multiple places you could put this pool. The one we provided this evening, we actually provided it earlier, but the pool was bigger then, so it was trickier. Now it's smaller. It fits quite well in that location. Adverse change. Again, ask yourselves, have you granted someone on a non-conforming lot the ability to build a structure that's not there now? And the answer is, I, I don't think you have, particularly with a non-conforming lot. And the impacts of the noise, the lighting, the equipment running all the time, the structures being that much closer. The last time we were here, you described about putting up a big fence. That fence is less than 20 feet from the Cornell's house. That's what they're looking at if, if this goes forward. So, thank you for your time. I, I know that the Cornell's wish to speak, and I know that there are other members that wish to speak as well. Public. Are there any questions? Yes.
Yeah. You're saying, you're saying we should treat this as a use variance?
I'm saying, John, that if you can get past the fact that it's a new structure that isn't permitted by 391.7 or 392.5, then yes, the only way to treat it is a, as a use variance. Now, I, I can see the theory that there's pools all over. How is this different? Because, because the pool isn't allowed.
Trying to make sure I've got the issues that you want us to address.
So to respond, thank you. Yes, if you can get past allowing a new structure on a non-conforming lot that already exceeds the coverage limitations without a variance for the existing violations in coverage, when we don't even have measurements from 1971 in this record. The only, the only measurements we have in this record from 1971 come from us. And they show that what was there before 1980 has more than doubled. May I answer other questions?
I don't have any questions.
I don't have any either.
No questions. I have a question, because you mentioned it was 20 feet away from their property. That's what they're staring at. But I recall when the Yagards invited us to go there, isn't that their garage?
Yeah, it is their garage. Their home is 19 feet away.
But their home looks at Stamfordville, right?
The garage is nice. They use the garage. And yeah, they don't, do they live in the garage? I don't think so.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to picture. It was a long time.
I spend a lot of time in my garage. I don't know that Jim does.
It's a nice place to.
It's easy.
To go.
It's easier out there.
I'm just trying to picture. And, and your proposal for this alternate site, you're saying if they moved it there, then there wouldn't be this use variance issue, this coverage variance issue? there wouldn't be this use variance issue, this coverage variance issue. All these variance issues, I mean.
It eliminates area variance issues. The coverage.
But not the coverage.
The coverage becomes an easier question from the neighbor's standpoint.
You'd want them to move the, you'd still need a media variance for the equipment. Unless you move that also.
Well, that went with it too, John. No, we wouldn't.
So this, that's, so you're, you're asking for everything. You're asking for the equipment as well as the pool. Attention to the other area.
Yeah, I, I didn't shoot the measurement, John, but I'm, the other area is not a hundred feet away. It's a different part of the backyard. It's just going in the other direction.
No, but if you're saying that.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at this, not this.
You're looking, if you're saying you only essentially nine feet from the side yard there, and the other location is on to the lower portion of that someplace, then you don't need a side yard.
Oh, that's correct. Is that? Is that scale? Lita, is this scale? Is this the scale?
I thought it was.
It just looks very differently.
Alan, Alan, it's only half.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Not the backyard. Okay.
Any other questions?
Uh, not for you. I do have a question for. And again, I, I went there. Can you put a pool, this alternate site, no variances for this?
This is the first time I've seen this, so.
Can you put a pool here?
I don't know. Um, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so I didn't. I wasn't prepared to address moving the pool. Uh, my understanding is that it couldn't fit anywhere else, um. And even if it did, it still need a, a lot coverage, which is again, seven tenths of a percent.
Can you explain that math to me? Seven tenths of a percent?
Any tracing to look at? The, um.
I see what you're saying, but do you, do you agree that it's fifteen hundred over already?
I am not opposing Mr. Finley's letter that was dated December fifteenth. Um, but with that, it's only seven tenths of a percent of an increase of the already pre-existing nonconforming, which is an allowable use. So it's.
My recommendation, Mr. Chair, is to allow either the applicant or the public to speak to the board and not to the John.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Would you like us?
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, and, and also I brought, this is, it's why I introduced myself. Uh, I'm Jim Cornell. Um, I've only seen you on Zoom. And, uh, my wife is also here, and I've invited Paul Schwartz, Ken Holzberg also, to speak to the, to the board. Um, I understand this, you know, this is a tough job. I'm on the planning board. I've been on the planning board for seven years. I understand the code pretty well, uh, just as well as you all do. And, um, I know in terms of this application, also just like, you know, we've been living on either side of this property for twenty two years. I'm very familiar with the property. So when I, when we, when we put those pictures together, that little, that proposed location, which requires no variances, which we propose is almost as a way of compromising on this. Move it away from us. No variances, and put the equipment on the other side of the house to concede all the measurements. There's no need for, uh, you know, it, it'd make all the sense in the world for them to do that. Now, of course, it has its preferences. There's a patio back there with a little fireplace. But I understand that also, you know, your job is to also accommodate the neighbors as well. And looking for something where, uh, an, an alternative site, which is perfectly fine, makes a lot of sense to me. Um, and it should make a lot of sense to them. It's right outside the back. Not very different from what they got, maybe not the, the, their most, their, this most preferred spot. But it certainly is a spot that doesn't cause anywhere near as type of, uh, controversy is what we're dealing with here. So I just, I just ask that your consideration, appreciate what you guys have been going through. And I just, uh, we'll turn it over to either Ken or Paul. Ken?
Thank you. Ken, again, um, Ken Holzberg, where is our cassette tape? I'm so impressed with all this technology.
It was Zoom now.
We've got high tech on you. Wow, we have hours. I'm, I'm impressed. Um, I, um, I'm here, as, as the Cornell said, in support of the Cornells. Um, and I've reviewed the code. I've heard all the facts over the last year. So I'm very familiar, um, with what's going on here. And, um, you know, you have attorneys here present that can speak to the this, where footage is, the areas and all of the percentages and all those kinds of things. Um, I just wanted to speak this evening a little bit about sort of an outsider's view of what's going on here and what I've observed. So, um, you may or may not know, I was on this board um, for about a part of four years. Frank and I started on the same day. Um, and John, of course, was here, and I was always sitting here, and then Fletcher, right where you're sitting, and at the end was Peter Paudia. And, um, you know, people ask me now, what was my time like on this board? And what I tell them is that I learned a lot. It's kind of a thankless sort of position. But what's always amazing about this board is, you know, we showed up every month, and we made the best possible decision that we could. And I always felt that every single time we got it right, the decisions that we made were always the right ones because we took the time to really think about these issues. And one of the things I remember and that I learned from my predecessors were you really need to consider the neighbors that are affected by these applications that come before us. Um, so inevitably, at each meeting, you know, it was particularly Fletcher or Peter would ask the applicant, um, do the neighbors know about what's going on here? Um, have you gone out? Have you talked to them? Did you include them? Did you discuss what this application was all about? And how did they respond? And all of the time when I heard that, those answers that we heard really sort of guided our decision-making of all of this i- in all of the decisions we made. Now, fast forward to tonight. Um, I, I had called the Cornells or, or wrote to them this morning, and I said, can I come over? I had heard about all this, but can I come over and just go out into your yard and just sort of look and see, uh, what's going on here for myself? Um, I assume have, have all of, each of you gone out and taken a look at this yourselves and not just looked at a plan?
I'm new to the board, so I am not.
Yes, we have gone out.
And that's, that's important. I, I really think it is, and I always tried to do that whenever we were making decisions. Because what you're looking at in plan or Google Maps or whatever that is, looks very different from what, when you're standing there. So standing back there, right at, you know, not at the garage, but on their porch, um, right at the bottom of the steps on their lawn, and I look over, and you're looking right at the construction of this pool. It's right there. You, you might as well build it in their backyard. It is right there. You know, these houses were built for whatever reason. They're on nonconforming lots. They were built very close together. Um, and that is the way it is, you know, and when the Cornells bought this house, they understood that, that their neighbors were right there. Um, but I'll tell you, looking at this construction now, honestly, they might, they might as well just be building right in the Cornell's backyard. And the thing about this is, they're not just talking about building a garage or a shed or something like that. This is a pool. And this is a pool equipment. You know, there's all of the issues with noise and light and music and the pool equipment. Everybody knows that it just makes a lot of noise. And it's right there. And I just say to you, um, because this is what my predecessors taught me. Think about this. Think about, you know, you're, you're trying to make peace here and do the right thing. If, go out there, you really should. Just go out there and look at this yourself. And I know if it was me, I'd be sitting right here, um, and objecting to this just like they are. And I think each one of you, if this was your property and, and someone was building this right on top of you, you'd be doing the same thing. You know, we have a zoning code, and it's a pretty good one. It has its, its, its issues, but it's a pretty uh, good code, and it doesn't guarantee someone the right to have a pool. And after I left the Cornells, I drove up the driveway of the adjacent property at issue here. And you know, I, 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 I mean no disrespect, but you don't have to be a rocket scientist. You don't have to be a lawyer or even a real estate agent to say, you know, this is not a site that's conducive to building a pool. Um, the house is slammed up against the rear lot line, against the side lot line. And anyone who came in to buy this house with some idea of wanting to put a pool, this wasn't the house for them. Not every house is, and it's not a guaranteed right. What our zoning code does do is it offers protections so that people like the Cornells can live in peace on their property and enjoy their property and have some comfort level that something like this is not going to happen. And here it is, you know, in front of all of you, and you're sitting there. I just encourage you, go over there again, stand at, in the Cornell's, right at the, on their deck out back or on their lawn right there, and think about if it was yourself, how you would feel if your neighbor was building a pool right there. And, you know, I think it's fine to say that, you know, they're not going to make a lot of noise in the pool. They have young kids or parties, and it's, they should be able to do that if they have a pool. But a pool doesn't belong in this location. It's just more of a, a practical view of things. I just went over. I wanted to see for myself. I encourage you to see the same, the same. Thank you for listening to me. I don't mean to delay you any later tonight. That's what I wanted to say.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Good evening. So for those that don't know me, my name is Dr. Paul Schwartz. I served on the planning board of Town of Washington for approximately nine years. I was the chair for approximately five years. And as such, um, I've got some familiarity with code. Um, the Cornell wants me to, um, look at this application. And I just wanted to go over some of my thoughts uh, as it applies to, and, and I, and I don't disagree with, uh, Ken, and I don't, I don't, I'm not looking to challenge anything that, uh, Mr. Athelier said. But I see it from a slightly different perspective. Um, having dealt with, um, this specific issue of uh, pre-existing nonconforming lots, pre-existing nonconforming structures, um, expansion under the nonconforming twenty five percent, uh, issue. Um, so that's just an outline of the things I'm going to touch on, just so the, uh, the specifics are there. Um, but the bigger issue, I think, is the code and the viability of the code. And where the code, you have the ability to make an interpretive judgment on it. Where the code ends up following your, your decisions. Um, comment that Ken made about, about these pre-existing nonconformings. The pre-existing nonconforming lots, most of them were built prior to the imposition of the code. And so what the code says is, if you own one of those lots, one of those structures, and the code imposed a restriction on it, they, they gave leniency or variance to those individuals, those owners per se. Uh, but there are restrictions on that. It's not, it's not an open-ended, uh, situation. Um, the parcel, as you know, is in an RR ten zone. Um, it's a pre-existing, pre-existing nonconforming lot with a pre-existing nonconforming structure. Um, section three ninety specifically says the intent of the local law is that nonconformities should not be expanded. The existence of any present nonconformity anywhere in the town shall not in itself be considered grounds for issuance of a variance for any other use, building or structure. So the map of the other pools is immaterial, regardless of what their level of nonconformity is. Um, section three sixty one defines a swimming pool as an accessory structure. It's clearly a separate structure. The district use regulations for, for RR ten delineates a swimming pool as an accessory use permitted by right. So in an appropriate situation, it is by right. But the former statement is mitigated by the proposed siting of the pool. The location requires multiple variances relating to setback in area. So you can't take that district, district, district use regulation as being the operative situation. Um, section four eighty one B dictates that in case of change of user variance, which does not require additional construction or site modification, or in the case of minor changes, the planning board may determine that site plan applications are not applicable. But this application, it does not fit that proposal or tho- those specifications. So this application does not fall within those parameters, and site plan review therefore is required. If site plan review is required, then the rules on application of uh, building permit and the rules on application for planning board, site plan, or operative. This application, to the extent that it's currently in the form it is, under section three oh two five and section four eighty three, this application for a building permit and, and or site plan are deficient. And without proper and complete application, ZBA should not even be entertaining this application. Um, section four twenty two. B. Whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance, it dictates that this variance shouldn't be allowed because there is an alternate uh, method that's feasible for the applicant to pursue. If you look at the same subject, some section E, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created, which considered, which consideration shall be relevant to relevant to this, the decision of the zoning board of appeals, but shall not necessarily preclude the granting of the area variance. So as Alan had mentioned, and I think Ken touched on, um, this was self-created. And it has been the position of the planning board, to the point that I served on it, that self-created issues were not applicable to relief. So we would not typically refer that over to, to ZBA. And apparently, the house, the, the pool can be located to the south and or east of the house without, without the setback variances. I disagree with Alan a bit on section three ninety one seven. As far as structures to be enlarged, they talk about gross floor area. This is not floor area. This is a separate structure. A pool has no relationship to floor area. So the extension of twenty five percent doesn't apply at all, regardless of any other issues that have been, that have been addressed here. So in general, to sum up, the foregoing specifically delineate criteria by which the ZBA cannot grant relief from the code. Further, if the rationalization is financial outlay by the applicant, it, it'll set a precedent for all variance applications going forward. It'll actually behoove all applicants to undertake construction without a permit and beg forgiveness if and when stopped by the building inspector. As a quasi judicial entity, actions taken by you, the ZBA, set precedence and would entirely obviate the intent and application of the Town of Washington Building and Zoning Code. You guys have questions? I'm, I'm happy to answer them.
I don't.
I have none.
No, I have no questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Do you want to have any rebuttal to what's been said?
Yes, um, okay, um, with regard to self-created, our client went to the ZBA seeking a variance and it was granted and received a building permit. And on this basis commenced construction, including excavation and recovery, there is a huge hole in the ground that's been there for over a year. Um, the, the hardship is not self-created. Um, spent numerous tens and tens of thousands of dollars on attorneys and applications, contractor fees. And um, the applicant feels that, you know, he should be able to enjoy it just as others in the neighborhood do. I would also say that this is not a use variance. Um, I cited a case Will Cox versus zoning board of appeals, um, that with regard to uh lot coverage or area variance, um, this is considered, no, for lot coverage, it's considered an area variance, um, not a use variance. And the cases cited by Alan, they talk about cases where the, the, um, it was totally different use. It was a height structure that they wanted another floor built on or two floors built on. This is not, this is not the case. This is a swimming pool. It's flat. Um, it's totally different than those cases. Um, we're not changing the use. This is an extension of a residential use for parties and their young children. Um, in terms of the looking at the construction site, um, looking at it today in the winter and seeing construction site is a lot different than see, seeing a completed pool and when in the summertime, there would be uh tree coverage and then the other, um, privacy fence and other uh items that would be put in place, which would go before the planning board and wouldn't be part of the ZBA. But certainly to consider, um, a construction site's a lot different, a lot uglier, um, than a completed pool that's in the ground. I think that's it.
Can I reiterate John on most points?
You want to rebut what she just said?
He does. I'll take two minutes, John. Public hearing's still open, so, yeah.
But he had a chance.
I'm not a mind reader, John. I didn't know what she was gonna say. Had a chance?
Go ahead, come on up here.
Three things, um, because at least a couple of the folks, perhaps three, were not here when the variance was first, first granted. The problem with the variance is the neighbors weren't notified, as everyone knows, so.
Rebut her issues only, please.
Sure, John. The uh, the argument had been made, number one, by Lita, that it was self-created. Uh, that it was not self-created because he got a variance and then got a building permit. Those were all defective because none of the neighbors got notice. And um, when the neighbors got notice, obviously that changed. So you'll also note that in the present application, the applicant's attorney took the, took, they sent the notices. So the applicant had to have known in the first application that nobody knew because there was nothing in the file. So it, it's not, it's still self-created. When you get, when you get a permit and it's not a valid permit, it's not a permit, period. So it's unfortunate that money was spent, but it wasn't a valid permit. Secondly, the case that I cited as to a use uh variance, uh, the second point that Lita made, um, the case is right on point. The use was allowed in the district. The doubling of the size of the building with the number of floors was not. And the second department said, this is akin to a use, not an area variance case. It's us. It's the same point. Third point is, Lita's exactly right. It will look much different when it's a pool. It will be much louder. There will be many more lights. There will be much more activity than just a hole in the ground. So that argument cuts the other way. It's a hole in the ground right now. It's not a very good-looking hole in the ground. When it's a pool, it's gonna have a lot of activity around it, which is gonna be much more intrusive than the hole in the ground. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Yes, please. Motion by Frank, second by Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Uh, for me, yeah, okay. For me personally, there's a couple of legal issues that have been, have come up that I'd like to be able to review with our attorney. Until we do that, I'm not really prepared to vote on anything. I'd like to discuss this with our own attorney.
Second that too.
You agree with that?
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable.
I concur with what you said. Uh, the other question would be, anybody want to do a site uh visit?
Yeah, I would, I would like to, uh,
Okay.
Oppressed this week and through the holidays, cause I'll be out of town for some of it, but.
Well, the next meeting's not until January.
Yeah, so I can get out there before then.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went.
So, okay.
And you're also welcome to walk on the Cornell land as part of that if it's helpful. We won't be shocked.
But I guess we need a motion to uh carry that it's over to uh next to January.
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Alex. All in favor?
Aye. All right.
Motion carried unanimously.
John, when's that date?
January sixteen.
That's a third.
I think so.
Yeah, because we're your John Croners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on.
Thank you. So we can call before we. Alan, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
That's why.
One night.
That way we was, it's a good day for us to come on.
Yeah, and you can text.
Yeah, you got his number. Happy holidays.
Okay. Oh, sure. Let's do that.
This is Newman, but he may be having trouble. It's okay if she has her phone on.
Yeah, I gotta put boots on the ground with that one. What's that? Yeah. Yeah, that was.
Okay, now we're doing.
All right, this is the solo thing.
Okay.
Hi there.
Hi Heather.
Hi.
Speaker.
We're on speaker with uh my husband, Tim Lynch. Good day, Tim.
Good evening, Tim.
Uh, when you were here in October, I think we asked you to go back and take some more pictures of the
Yes, that's right.
From the street.
Right.
You, I think that was only.
And, and didn't we ask for some kind of a, some, some acknowledgement from her neighbor?
Oh, yes, that's right.
Yes.
And if I recall, right, I saw, uh, she already had the Battistoni.
Mm-hmm.
She got something from Mills.
Yep.
She had a site visit, um, I think it was Newman.
Uh, we, we went to Mr. Newberg's.
Newberg?
House, yeah.
So, got a verbal okay from him.
I think he even emailed the, in, yeah, he said he would.
The only one that I don't, you did, you did, and I don't know, I may be in career, was the garage.
Yeah, we've, uh, so we've tried multiple times to, not only in addition to the, the notice, the public notice, which they signed, um, we stopped in, dropped off a letter. I mailed another letter, was there?
That's fine, you gave them notice.
Letter, we let them know.
That's all you have to do is give the notice.
Okay, they submitted, Yolanda submitted support for that.
Okay.
I dropped it off tonight.
Okay, great, Joe.
I actually, actually, we did this the second time. They, they already sent it to you.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it's already sent to you.
Okay.
So they redid it because you, you sent it to them again. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe, good.
You are a good friend, so.
So we got all okay from our neighbors.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So we've got something done from all four.
All four neighbors.
Within three hundred feet.
Okay, that's good, great.
Yep.
Okay, well, appreciate all the help, thank you. Um, and so we're.
And the only one would be the questions of the photographs. The only one that I was a little questioning. When I looked, went by the property and looked at it was the view from forty-four, which I think is this one, right?
The number five.
Number five.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
With the new screening, would the new straight screening cover that?
So that would be So I think we're about two hundred eighty to the property line. Um, I think, well, we've actually planted a few evergreens. They're short right now. Um, so the screening mostly addresses the view up the driveway. Um, and from here, this is, I guess, right in front of the utility pole. Um, so none of that directly affects it. We would have to probably plant some trees, um, well, I think because of the elevation dips and then goes up in the back. Um.
People drive so fast past.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you have to be standing there.
Yeah, it would be neighbor here most.
Yeah, I think the neighbor directly across would have, I'm sure you find a different map, but um, I think they're the one with the red roof.
The yellow.
Red branch there up the hill.
Yes.
Um, but that property is outside of three hundred, so I guess. Um, and I've spoken to them already, just casually, um, and they didn't have a concern. Yes, yes, so, um, I know they were friends with their prior owner, so we've been in touch with them infrequently, but we see them all the time. Um, but yeah, she, she mentioned she didn't have a concern, um, with that.
I was more concerned with just people driving on forty-four that uh, it's adequate to screen.
Cause you can see the staked-out marks, the staked-out field from forty-four. Is it yellow tape or whatever? The road to Sharon, what are those bushes you have now?
Um, so.
Road to Sharon.
Rose, there's road to Sharon.
And you're saying you planted evergreens behind that?
Yes, we, we planted, well, especially behind this utility pole.
And that part of forty-four though, no one's going slow.
Yeah.
It's really bad to look at her house. It's like you, that you're not gonna.
No, I purposely looked for.
Right, but I mean, it really, if you have cars, you're just gonna go, you know, and you're coming down the hill or you're going up the hill. I don't see, you know what I mean? I don't, cause I've sta-, I've had nobody behind me and I've stopped and looked. But the rarity of somebody coming by there to slow down just to see that is just, yeah. That's my, that's my opinion of it.
I have nothing further. I think that, you know, they've addressed all of the comments that AKRF uh mentioned. Um, the applicants come forward with letters from all the neighbors.
Did all the similar stuff they needed to do.
I don't have anything further at this point that we need to look at. It might be anyways.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree also.
Stuff they had to do and.
So then, uh, I'll make a, make some additions.
Did we have, did we close the public hearing?
Uh, I don't think so. We should probably should. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Tate. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I would make a motion that we declare this action type two under seeker, requiring no further environmental review.
Motion by Frank, seconded by the chair. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Okay. So then.
You have the measurements there? I think there, there's two side yard setbacks I think we need. Is that right?
No, I thought it was this, a backyard and, uh, here we go.
Um, it's. You got it?
The following variance is a variance, side yard setback, a sixty-six point five feet. And a rear yard setback of uh seventy-one feet.
Wouldn't, isn't that the western side yard though?
That's the rear, did I say west? Oh, I think it's, oh, it's one hundred, it's a hundred and three foot. It's over a hundred from the west.
Yard's okay.
Front end, the west side, facing Stanford Road.
It's just the rear and the side, correct?
Side setback thirty-three and a half feet.
Yeah, so that needs a sixty, sixty-six point five foot variance rear. Right?
Mm-hmm.
And then the side yard is a seventy-one foot for the western side yard.
No, that's.
This is the east side.
That's the rear. This is a side yard variance. Here's the side.
Yeah, and that's only twenty-nine feet, so we need a seventy-one foot variance for the side.
Okay, and you need a sixty-six foot variance for this rear.
Right. I would make a motion that we grant both variances.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, no. This is side yard setback of sixty-six feet. This way.
Yeah, I stapled it. I should make it, this was part of the name.
Oh, and what's that?
Yeah.
Comment from our.
Oh, comment. Okay. Um, well, I, maybe they're considering the front, the forty-four.
One side yard variance sixty-six point five feet, that would be the west.
Yes, proposed thirty-five point five.
That's east side.
Proposed rear.
And rear yard, okay, so that's the front then. That's why this is rear and it's side.
Step back is twenty-nine.
I think that we were looking at it differently.
Ah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's sixty-six variance and a.
Only because the house.
Evening side is seventy-one.
Yeah, so the motion would be a eastern side yard variance of sixty-six point five feet. And a rear yard setback variance of seventy-one feet.
Variance, yeah.
That would be my motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Tate.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you so much. Appreciate your time and.
You did a good job, Tim.
Okay.
There's a sunshine on your property.
No problem.
There you go.
Appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, you too.
Oh, Tim hung up, tell Merry Christmas.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Uh, I'm Alexander Podmenetsky and this is Corin Podmenetsky.
John, greasy, this is Frank.
Great.
Alex.
Katie.
Katie.
Member of the board.
Members of the board. Um, well, this is certain, we've been an interesting week. This is truly new and uncharted territory for us as we apply for variance. And honestly, we were discussing on our way or earlier this evening whether we should withdraw our app, withdraw our application.
Why?
Because we wanted to change the language of it, to change, uh, really the, um, the tense of, of the language in the application. We talk of the shed as being a proposed shed.
Mm-hmm.
It is in fact a shed that's in place and has been in use for six months.
Oh, it's already there.
It's already there.
Was my fault in that I worked with James on all the, um, when we renovated the house that we bought. And I worked with James on all the renovations.
And permitting.
And was trying to learn how to do it. And we're trying to learn how to do it. And it wasn't until when he came for the the last, when I, he was coming for the um, building permit to close it, that I said to him, and I add the, and I add the shed, I forgot. And I had gone, when we were moving. And there was a shed on sale, and I said, oh, this is perfect. And then when I was doing the, the closing documents, I said to James, I said, oh my God, and when he said you can't put it in there, you need to apply for a permit, I mean, a variance, and then the permit, and um, and everything is wrong on our property.
All non-conforming.
It's all non-conforming. And um, and even where our contractor put the shed is non-conforming. Because I got this piece the other day, and I just went out and measured where, where they put the shed.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Where contract would put it in there, this is only ninety-two feet. So it means.
Yes, Mr. Tognitsky.
Can you revise?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
I mean, every.
You gotta revise one?
I do.
Oh, perfect.
All right, great.
Cause they were gonna ask you to get one.
Oh, we got it. That's good.
But it.
Thank you. Okay.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
I see the front yard dimensions, but nothing on the side yard.
Seventeen point eight. That's still good on the side?
Yes.
Yes.
It's the front.
If you look at the old, last one, what they originally said, it's seventeen and eighteen.
Oh, okay, I see. I, I got you now. Right. So the eighteen point three is.
Right. So.
Yes.
It's the, it's where they put it. There, it doesn't meet the hundred feet even from the
Yeah. The side yard now is how far from the, the property line?
This is the property line here, and the shed's eighteen point three.
Okay, so that seventeen is.
Right.
Okay, so.
Good D B.
And I didn't mean, I'm, sorry.
Hmm. Sorry, David. And then the front yard. Hundred feet, so it's seven and a half feet. Seven, so.
Yeah.
So, you don't have to rework, you don't have to resubmit the application. We can just accept your oral amendment. But we go forward with the shed being there.
We were also asked to provide an elevation for the, the drawings of the shed itself, which we have here.
The standard.
Yeah, standard shed. Oops, um, why can't it?
Twelve-foot shed.
Yeah, standard shed.
Standard shed.
And we also have pictures of the sheds.
About ten feet high. Is this a pre-tab?
Yeah.
Just put it on gravel or something?
Yes.
It's not gravel and stone, but it doesn't meet.
You don't need a foundation. It's just on gravel and stone. Okay?
And our dog's the hero of the images.
I see him out here.
I see you've got the wells, doesn't it, just to fix, where's it set at?
Settling in the front yard.
I mean, it says the.
Sort of right in front.
Concrete covered.
Right there.
Okay. What's the checkered area at the back? Is that a patio or something?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, we had the drilling.
And the shed, if I'm seeing this correctly, is already shielded. You've got a fence.
The fence.
Other side fence is a significant pine tree.
Yes.
Right. And right up on the shed there.
Yep.
And then the land falls away fairly significantly behind the shed to the fence.
Hmm, I see that.
So we, um, yeah, we, we sent out the cards uh, with the notice of the meeting, and we got all back except for one, which is uh, the neighbor immediately to our west, the Woods family. Um.
Have you talked to them at all?
We've talked to their son Dougie.
Yes.
Um, and he's been picking up mail, but he moved out um, recently.
It's been vacant since we moved in, which was Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we were just mowing the lawn, just so.
We didn't have to look at it.
Well, he didn't have a mower anymore. The mower was taken. But um, and we've heard, but we don't know that it will be going on the market.
No.
But we haven't, um.
But you said registered.
Yep.
Yes. I mean, we did, and what was kind of odd was, I was there one day when they were deli-, um, delivering them, and I could see it going in their mailbox that it just is delivered, so you don't really have to sign. It's not like someone, like I have a P O box, so you have to sign for it.
Exactly.
Thought you had a sign for it.
No, you don't.
Oh, you don't?
Really?
I don't think so. You can go right, yeah.
Cause they were just put in, on back of envelopes and sent mail to paper.
Be certified. No one.
Well, mine went out certified, but they didn't, like, they were just delivered in a mailbox that was up to you to sign it when you send it back.
Mm-hmm.
And all the other ones came back. The only one we didn't.
It's a lot of different things these days, you know? They're probably supposed to be that way.
The only reason I'm questioning you is cause we got in trouble with the yard guard.
Right.
Yeah.
Because they said they didn't receive it. So now we changed the, the code so that, you know.
You have to, you're right.
You had, supposedly you had a sign for it.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're just sitting, you know, put in cell box.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see where it's doing any better than what we were.
We were doing, right.
Companies there.
I thought it was odd that most of them, they brought, they did this and were not signed, but they came back.
Okay.
All except for the ones that was put in the business mail.
So you did everything you were supposed to do.
Yeah. So you're basically saying it's there.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have put it anyplace else on the property.
Well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It was just a huge oversight on my part.
No, no.
This is a, there is a pitch piece of property, and the only area that's really flat is where the houses and extending out either way.
Okay, so what variances are we looking at?
We need a side yard and front.
Okay.
Based on the measurements, we need a uh, thirty-two point seven foot side yard variance and a seven point five.
Thirty-two point.
Thirty-two point seven.
Thirty-one point seven.
Oh, right.
Cause we're.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Eighteen.
It's eighteen.
I didn't carry it or not. Yeah, so a thirty-one point seven side and the front is seven point five.
Seven point five, right.
I would make a motion.
Well, we can't get there.
You hit them there.
Need to go through public hearing first.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open public hearing. Motion by Chair, seconded by Frank, all in favor?
Aye. Does anybody have any, anything to say on this application?
I have a sign-in sheet for everybody.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
I'll second it. Motion by Frank, seconded by the Chair, all in favor? Close, motion carried unanimously. Okay, we need a title uh, for seeker.
Uh, I would make a motion that we declare this action type two under seeker, uh, not requiring any further environmental review.
I second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Katie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously.
Then I would make a motion that we grant a thirty-one point seven foot side yard variance and a seven point five foot front yard variance for the shed.
I second.
Motion by Frank, seconded by Katie, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carried unanimously. You're done. Uh.
Thank you.
Sorry, no.
Now you really, really enjoy your shed now.
Well, yeah, well, you'll get better night's sleep.
Yeah.
You want the, the piece back?
Me jeans were so nice.
I took notes on this, but.
I'm, yeah, but I want to have a detective session.[1699.92]